Good evening and welcome to the first meeting of 2025 for the Richmond Common Council. It being the first meeting, we will begin with elections and I will open the floor for nominations for president.
Mr. President, I nominate Larry Parker.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Floor is now open for Mr. Parker to move it.
Okay.
Conduct the rest of this meeting since I can't read the agenda.
Before I do that, the City of Richmond and the Common Council thanks you for your service.
Well, thank you. Very nice.
Gary, I'd like to personally thank you for your leadership this year.
Thank you. We'll now take nominations for vice president.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, I nominate Justin Burkhart as vice president.
Second.
Have a motion and second for Mr. Burkhart. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Burkhart for vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Burkhart. We now call to order the meeting for the Common Council for January the 21st. Would you please stand for pledge allegiance and remain standing for prayer by Councilor Bumblelow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day and thank you for each and every person here. I pray, dear God, that we will humbly submit to you. May the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable and pleasing to you. I pray, dear God, that we will do what is right. Sometimes we make decisions that are not easy and we will receive criticism and hardships, but we have to stand for what is right and what is true. I pray, dear God, that you'll watch over and protect us, keep us all safe, bring blessings on our families and our friends, and I pray, dear God, that you will be present here with us. In Jesus' name, we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting was held on December 16th, 2024.
Mr. President, there's no...
Mr. Purcell.
If there's no amendments, I would move that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December the 16th.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve the minutes of December the 16th as submitted. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Presentations, petitions, memorials? Do we have any? Hearing none? Communications from the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
At our last meeting, December 16th, there was comments about the city not enforcing its codes, so I thought I'd bring a report from the code enforcement department. I promised Matthew Keller, who's the new director, that I would not put him on the spot tonight because he's only been in the role a couple of weeks or a couple of months. So here's a quick update. So in 2024, code enforcement performed 3,156 inspections. They issued 482 code violation tickets that included the filing of 220 liens on neglected properties, and those liens occur when tickets are unpaid and we have to do the work ourselves, either through the code enforcement or contractors. Along the way, they demolished six abandoned blighted homes, and they have more on the list. They removed 171.59 tons of trash while making 3,435 pickups, and that was just one team of maintenance team. They removed 101 overgrown trees and other vegetation from streets, alleys, and sidewalks. They mowed 354 overgrown yards and lawns that the owners did not mow following ticket issuance. And if you'll recall, when it's noted that grass is too high, the property owner is given a 10-day notice through certified mail, and if they don't mow it, then we mow it and put a lien on a property, actually send them a bill, and some of them paid the tickets, but not many, and it becomes a lien later on, especially if you go to the same property multiple times throughout the year. This is kind of fun. They picked up 518 abandoned shopping carts throughout the city and 704 illegally disposed vehicle tires around the city. So yes, we are enforcing the city's codes. However, we still need to finish the codification project for certain fines other than what code enforcement does for other fines, so we're working on that again through the law department. I know Mr. Turner worked on that a lot when he was council president, and it's finally coming back around through the American Legal Publishing in Cincinnati. They're finally getting things updated for us, and that should come back fairly soon, sooner than later, before we change some ordinances and change the code and have to update again, get it updated. The only other comment I have is about the Elder Brimman Project. They plan to conclude demolition in a few weeks, and the contract for the civil work, the underground work, has already been awarded, so as soon as the demolition is done, there was going to be a pause and some other work done. There was actually in the original contract with the work, there was a time, thought several months, where they would have to fill in the site and put some grass seed because we didn't want just mud and dirt, but we immediately, because it was a delay in starting the project, they're immediately going to roll over to the underground civil work right afterwards. So you'll just see this thing rolling on. Plan is to still start leasing in 2026 apartments, so looking forward to that. That's all I have.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Engel.
Mr. Mayor, do we know when they are going to start construction on that project?
As soon as the demolition is done, civil work starts. As soon as the civil work is done, which will take a few months, all the underground water sewer and all that stuff, that could take several months. So as soon as that's done, you know, late spring, early summer, we want to have enough completed that people will see it and start writing contracts for leasing in 2026. I don't think it'll be finished until sometime in 2026, but they want to have enough.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any additional questions of the mayor at this time?
Mr. President.
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Oler, I received an email from Abilities, and they wanted to resume conversations with you regarding the parking lot.
Yeah, comments from there, I'm supposed to talk about that stuff. We are finally meeting with them again later this week and talk about who's going to repair the retaining wall and then a purchase price for the parking lot. So yes, they have a great need for the purchase of that parking lot. There was a city parking lot, and there is a city parking lot across the street, so we're not affecting people wanting to park downtown. There's plenty of city parking across the street. Now that that's no longer a retail store that people would need access to on the side, they need access.
They need access.
Sometime later this week, maybe even Thursday, I'm thinking. I think we meet with them Thursday.
You're meeting with them Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, because they sent me an email.
Three quotes on that retaining wall and the cost, and we've got to figure out who's paying to fix the retaining wall, and is that coming off the purchase price, and they'll do it, so we'll find that out. We'll talk about that Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions of the mayor at this time?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can you give us an update on the secret ingredient building?
Just that the...not really. I don't know if Beth wants to say anything. That'll come through the place project, the place program, I'm sorry. I did finally tour it this winter and made sure that the water was off and the heat was on, so there's no problems with it, but yes, I'm in a hurry to get it rented, too.
Yes, we are partnering with Revitalize Richmond and the College and Community Collaboration Grant, and there is a business coach that is being hired through that process, and that is the process that we will be going through to determine who will be able to acquire that building. So as soon as that individual is in place and that process is in place, then we'll be able to move that forward.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Any timeframe on that?
I know that Ehrlich was working on that agreement currently, so I can double-check and follow up with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any additional questions of the mayor? Hearing none. Report of the Board of Public Works and Safety, the minutes of December 5th, 12th, 18th, and January the 2nd were included in your packet. Do you have any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Hearing none. Reports from department heads. Standing committees and special committees. We have under that Wayne County Economic Development Commission nomination, Brandy Jackson. We do need to make this tonight as their meeting will happen at 4:00 before our next meeting, which will be at 7:00. So they need to have this so they can have someone on their board.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
This is Economic Development Corporation of Wayne County, right?
Yes.
Not the commission, so that's a typo.
Right, you're correct.
It's a different entity.
It's...the commission is for bonding only.
That's ours.
Do we have any other nominations? What is council's pleasure?
I move that we approve the nomination of Brandy Jackson. Ms. Jackson.
Have a motion and second to approve the nomination of Brandy Jackson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Historic preservation nomination is Damon Jacobson. It is our normal procedure to hold this over for one more meeting, and we'll see if we have any other nominations. Parks and Recreation, we have a report from Denise.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have in front of you a report here. This is my annual 2024 Park Department end of the year report, and I'll go over this at a high-level view and just...okay. So Denise Retsch and I have the pleasure of being your park superintendent for the last nine years, and in 2024, we have a ton of accomplishments that we want to go over and kind of, we've fit them into divisions for you to kind of break them down, and the divisions are broken down on the first page for you. And on the next page, we kind of lay out all of the grants and donations that we were able to receive in 2024, and we had over $250,000 in donations and grants that we received, which we were super excited about. And we also identify, and if you don't know, we have seven cabins that we run out and 17 outdoor shelters and five venue locations. So those are things that we work really hard to maintain and make sure that we have so that we can have additional revenue. We have this impact snapshot that you'll see that talks about how we broke down the actual donations and grants that we received. And then on the next page, you'll see how it broke down all of the increased revenue that we received, and we broke down just two sections for you this year. The pool actually received an increase in revenue from '23 to '24, and we wanted to show you how we increased revenue in concessions, daily entry, annual pool passes, and swim lessons. And then we also wanted to show you how well that the Senior Recreation Center did in '24 and how we increased in memberships and also facility rentals. So that was an amazing increase that we had there, so we wanted to highlight that. When we go into park facility usage in 2024, I think you'll be surprised at how many birthday parties that we have. 362 birthday parties we had in 2024, six weddings, 104 baby showers, 61 holiday parties, 45 celebrations of life, 67 grad parties, and 123 family reunions. That's a lot of fun times that we've had at the park, and you can see how many community events are held at the Parks Department and how many people really value the Parks Department and the places and spaces that we have. When you could jump over to the Senior Recreation Center in the 2024 update here, they received over $15,000 in grants. We had over 170 new members in 2024, and we calculated over 93 volunteer hours just for the membership. We added a ton of programs in 2024, and it's been a very successful year for them. When we jump into 2024 in the community event section, you'll see that we hosted 23 free community events. We had over 220 players that enrolled in Industrial Softball League. We had 400 local youth enrolled in Juco camps and 132 walking club members, and we rewarded 36,000 in grants and sponsorships just in the community event section, and we had over 70 community partnerships in the community event section. When we talk about our farmer's market, it has never been better. We have over 325,000 in vendor sales in 2024. Over $65,000 was redeemed in SNAP double dollars, and we had and supported over 100 local vendors. We...it was new this year to do a WIC match, and that brought over 3,500. And so we hosted 47 Saturday markets, 12 Tuesday markets, and 15 special event days. We did something really cool this year where we distributed $252 fresh bucks to vouchers for kids at the market to try fresh fruits and vegetables, and that was really fun. We also did podcasts this year called Local Roots. If you've never seen that, you should jump on, and we highlighted different vendors, and that was a great highlight for our market. We had a ton of maintenance projects. There's always something to do at every park with all of these events that we have, and so we had a wonderful renovation to the Glenn Miller Golf Course Clubhouse with our partners from Shook Construction, and so we renovated that. If you haven't seen it, it is a big transformation. We also helped out the Cardinal Greenway by fixing the railing, and we also took down the sidewall at the Starganet area. I don't know if you noticed that. Tons of trees were cleaned up and tons of repairs in buildings and things like that, so there's always something to do at the park. In the floral division, we planted 465 trees. 60 dead trees were removed, 75 young trees were structure pruned, and over 300,000 was received in IRA funding from the Urban Forestry Division. We had over 794 volunteers, and that calculated 12,950 volunteer hours throughout the entire Parks Department. We partnered with Ehrlich College Capstone Project to develop and implement a pollinator garden and no-mow area in Springwood. We maintained flower pots in the summer and in the fall and in the winter. I'm sure you saw them down there watering on a regular basis. We maintain eight miles of trails for trash, down trees, and maintenance needs, and as you know, Laura Carnes became an ISA certified arborist, and Brandon became a certified ecologist. Sorry. But we maintain parks and city landscape beds, including the cycle track. We work really hard with all of our other city departments as well. The next section you'll see is our priority planting classification. We partnered with the Environmental Resilience Institute, so you'll see that there. And then with Highland, wrapping out our divisions, we were able to purchase 10,200 new range balls for the range. We negotiated two new utility vehicles when we are able to get our new carts in March, and we hosted the IU East Invitational, which is a two-day event with 130 players. It was very successful. We...our bid was accepted for the VFW statewide tournament to be held at Highland in 2025, which is a two-day event, and there's tons more that we could go on and on and on. I made a quick highlight about 2024 and our gorge allotment that we've been supported by our gorge project, and more of that will be coming. And then I talked through and gave you a kind of a snip about what we're doing in 2025. Obviously, we're still doing the Winter Farmer's Market, 9:00 to noon. We're busy finalizing all the events for 2025. Meltdown Festival is right around the corner on the 27th through February 1st at Elstra, so look for those events. We're busy pushing snow, keeping things clean, and rehabbing picnic tables for the busy season, and installing a new floor at Middle Fork Reservoir, and we're busy planting seeds. We've planted already over 15,000 seeds. That will equal over 10,000 plants and more to come. So definitely follow us on social media, and thank you for all of your support, and I can answer any questions that you have.
That's a very good and informative report. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Denise. Very good.
Mr. Engel.
Denise, I wanted to ask you about the grants for the...$73,000 for the farmer's market. Was that...were those grants? What was that?
So for the farmer's market, yes, we have a double dollars program that we partner with Reed Health Community Benefit, and they double any SNAP benefits that come our way. And so those are all...that's very helpful for our community.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Under miscellaneous business, just a heads up, I'm going to call a committee of the whole for our proposed blight ordinance, which will not be next week, but the week after. I'll give to you with the time and the date.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, in the past two weeks, I have received multiple calls from citizens as well as state, county, and city officials regarding the lawsuit originally filed by Officer Adam Lanton against Wayne County Prosecutor Michael Shipman. The focus of everyone's concern is the precedent of taking the taxpayers' money to fund this lawsuit. Some in this room would have you believe that the City of Richmond should be the precedent setter toward the goal of reining in alleged prosecutorial misconduct. I do not know about you, but my constituents do not consider the funding of this lawsuit to be proper use of taxpayer money, no matter what line item of the police budget is used. I would like to make a motion that this council vote to show a rejection of support for the use of taxpayers' money for this lawsuit.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve or disprove the rejection of the monies being spent for this lawsuit.
Mr. President.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that we state the appropriateness of this and what it actually means, what a vote like this actually means.
From my perspective, it would be symbolic, Mr. Engel.
Symbolic, okay. That I wanted to know. Thank you.
Mr. Goss.
Just to clarify, a vote in favor of this ordinance would be a vote against funding.
Correct. I was getting ready to...
Okay, say that again.
Pardon me?
Can you repeat, please?
Does everybody understand?
No.
A vote in favor of this motion would be a vote against the funding.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Abstained.
Jane Bumble.
Aye.
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 Aye. Eight to one, thank you. Ordinance is on first reading. Mr. Goss.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we read ordinance 1, 2025, 3, 2025, and for by title only.
Second.
Motion and second to suspend the rules and read ordinance 1, 2025, and ordinance 3, 2025 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Audrey Shake, and I am the Grand Administrator for the city. Ordinance 1, 2025 is an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Department of Transportation. The City of Richmond is requesting $1,016,966 in funding through NDOT's 2025 Community Crossings Matching Grant for improvements to 13 local roads. These improvements include milling and paving. This grant requires a 50% match, which will be allocated from budgeted local road and street and redevelopment commission funds.
Any questions at this time?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
As I understand this, they will match up to $1 million? Is that correct?
So it is a...
Or $2 million overall?
It's a 50% match. The $1 million is going to have to be...it's the same...excuse me, is what the match will be. So that's what we're requesting. It's half of the cost of the total project, and so since there's a 50% match, our match will equal that $1,016,966.
Thank you.
Just for clarification for the rest of council meetings, redevelopment met today and approved the matches out of the District 1 Tiff and out of the...oh, John Manville Tiff District. A little over $500,000 from the John Manville and right at $200,000 from the First District.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question on...you mentioned a million, and yet it says it's authorized to accept grant funding from the transportation amount up to $1,500,000.
I'm sorry, I don't...could you repeat that?
Well, that math works. We approved a $700,000, a little over $700,000 match today, so the state will provide the other half of that to make it almost 1.5.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, the Community Crossings Grant is offered twice a year. There are two rounds, and the city is eligible for 1.5 million in one calendar year. So in our first application, we're requesting the $1,016,966 for the 13 roads that have been identified, and then when round two opens in July, then we will make application for the balance to get us so another $484,000 that we will be requesting funding in the second round.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Finance Committee met, and we heard from these two individuals. There is a grant date on this of 1/31, is that correct?
Yes.
And we discussed it, and we give it a positive recommendation to move forward.
Thank you. So we need to have a motion to move it to second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to advance ordinance 1, 2025 to second reading, read by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance number 1, 2025 is on public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition to this ordinance?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. President. Mr. Goss.
We're on to the next one.
No, we have to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the third and final reading. Pardon me?
Yeah, call the question.
Call the question.
Right. I did.
We have to read. And a second?
Second.
Please just call the roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
James Clark, Assistant Fire Chief, uh, Richmond Fire Department. Um, we're asking the common council to approve an ordinance for the city to accept donations for the Richmond Fire Department. Uh, from time to time, various businesses donate to the fire department, and, uh, we attach these donations to special projects, but not limited to, uh, confined space training, defibrillators, drone programs, uh, emergency medical services, hazmat, uh, materials team, or the training facility, et cetera.
Any questions regarding ordinance thirty-three, excuse me, three, 2025 from council? Hearing none. What's council's pleasures?
Mr. President?
Mr. Burkhardt?
Um, if there's no time on this, can, would, would you mind recommending it to Senate Committee?
Let me find. Finance Committee will hear this. Be at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Ordinance 70, 2024 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of ordinance 70, 2024?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If it's okay, uh, I'd like to call Beth Fields. We had some discussion on this.
Certainly.
Um, on the second reading, uh, Beth, if you, if you will, um, just to kind of update everybody and, um, kind of the importance of this comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Sure. We are seeking this funding from the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity, or RACE, which is what we're referring this to. And this transportation plan will have a variety of components. We will look at data collection and analysis. We'll look at land use, look at demands and forecasting, how traffic is flowing through the community. We'll look at all multimodal transportation, so that will include bicycle, pedestrian, anything motorized, the airport, our transit. All of that will be included in this plan, as well as infrastructure improvements, safety strategies, different project prioritization. There will be a lot of community engagement with this. There is something, um, that everyone in the community is passionate about as it relates to transportation. And when we look at these benefits that we're going to see for the community, we're going to see increased mobility. They're going to have the ability to get to and from the places that they need to go. We'll see reduction in traffic congestion. So, if we have those areas that have some challenges, we'll be able to come up with strategies that will address that. This will also have a lot of enhanced safety as we go through and we look at the different transportation modes that we have. And we can develop targeted safety measures, um, pedestrian improvements, intersection upgrades, traffic calming measures. The plan will also look at how do we get to vision zero and how do we reduce all of the accidents and accidental deaths that we have. It will look at environmental sustainability as well as economic development. When you look at all of the recent economic development that we've had and all of the interest that we've had in the community, both in the industrial park, in our downtown area, and throughout the community, it's very important that we have adequate transportation that can serve those companies, both getting their employees to and from work, as well as getting their goods and services to and from their destination. So, that this plan will give us a robust look at that and help us to understand how best to do that. It will also ensure that we are looking at the cost effectiveness of what we're doing and really analyzing what needs to be done, how that needs to be done most efficiently, and how we can fund that. And of course, as the name implies, we want to ensure that this is equitable for all of those in our community and provides access to everyone. So, just wanted to provide those additional details, and I appreciate Councilor Burkhardt requesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, thank you, Beth. I, I thought it was important for all to hear that, um, as things get going, uh, in our EDC plans. Uh, Finance Committee also met on this and has a positive recommendation moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Bumbleau?
I move that we, um, move ordinance number 70, 2024 to second reading, or to, no, that's right, it's already on second reading.
There's a motion and a second for engrossment on the table.
Yeah.
I have a motion to engross. Are you second in that engrossment?
Yes.
Thank you.
There you go.
All in favor of engrossment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Call the question.
Please call the roll.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Is there any unfinished business to come before council this evening? Hearing none?
Move for adjournment.
All in favor to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.